My apologies.
Oops, sorry, that's me.
You were muting.
Is everybody muted?
Just a reminder on Zoom, everybody's muting.
I forgot to mute my computer, sorry. It's been awhile, out of practice.
Nope, no worries, everyone ready? Alright, I don't hear any more feedback, so. Okay, it is 7:02, I call the August 16, 2022 meeting of the Carver School Committee to order. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. It looks like we have Tammy here from the EAPC.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I hope everyone, yeah, I'm kidding. I hope everyone's enjoying and having some advantage of the warm weather and has had time for class. Many educators are enough for the next year, we're in classroom hoping and anticipating that this year will be a little easier than the past. We look forward to teacher new teacher, we pay for our department. And from the many conversations I've had, one thing we need more than anything is support. Support from our administration, from our student committee, from our families, from our students, and from our communities. By support, we mean listening to our concerns with consideration and care, asking our thoughts when making changes that affect our working mission. And most importantly, getting our input when it comes to providing the best possible education for all our students, treating us like the professionals we've been trained to be. Being an educator is more challenging than it's ever been. And I say this as I enter my 30th year as an educator in the Carver School District. Any support we can get will be sincerely appreciated as we work to make this the best year possible for all our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay.
So if it's alright, Sammy, I forgot to do my intro of just remind everybody this meeting is being held in person at Town Hall, live on Area 58. It's also being held virtually in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And so there's many ways to access the meeting, and I think we're gonna be going into the time for public comment. So if there's anybody on Zoom who'd like to participate in public comment, if they could put their name into the chat now, that would be greatly appreciated.
Excellent, thank you, Scott. Okay, it does not appear that there's anyone in the room that have, that would like to speak during public comment, but we do have some people in the room who are here to present. So if any of you would like to take this time to make a public comment, you're more than welcome to. Other than that, we'll wait a minute to see if anyone joins in the chat or puts their name in the chat to speak. Alright, I don't see anyone, so we will move on to the approval of minutes. Again, I am flying without the background agenda, so I do not have the dates for the minutes.
That's alright, I got you. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2022 school committee meeting. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So that brings us to communications.
There are no specific new communications for this evening.
Okay, great, so that brings us to reports from the superintendent.
And we'll start with our personnel updates. And so over the summer, we have actually had a lot of movement in personnel. And I think the one thing I want to note in here is, there's a lot of transfers. So we've had a lot of people within the district to changing roles, either because of just their personal interest for positions that became available, where they thought that might be a better fit for them or a better challenge. And we've had several people who are moving from the role of ESP to teacher in the district. So it's nice to see that with some of the movement that we had over the summer, we had the opportunity to give some of our, of our teachers and our staff opportunities to move in a different direction and do something that they were specifically interested in. So there are a lot of transfers. And there's been a lot of movement since we last met, so I'll go through the entire list. First, new hires. And I will say that for the September, historically for the September meeting, we've invited new teachers to attend and new administrators to attend as well. So I know we're gonna be hiring an assistant principal at the elementary school. We're in process to do that, so we'll invite that person to the September meeting. We've hired Sean McGinnis as a new assistant principal at the middle high school. We'll invite him, he's actually, he would have been here this evening, but he's actually sending his, moving his daughter into college. So we will invite him for our September meeting to meet the committee. And I'll also invite all of our new teachers to the September meeting. But so we'll go through all new hires. Roseanne Carvalho, food service manager at the elementary school, replacing Dodi Costa. Elizabeth Arujoe as a technology specialist. Madeline French is a grade five teacher at the elementary school. Rebecca Hewitt as a reading specialist at the elementary school. Rebecca Vass, ah, Vass, sorry, as a BCBA district-wide position. Janice Bennett as a long-term sub-reading specialist. And Janice was a former teacher of ours who is retired a couple of years back. Rebecca Perry is an ESP math interventionist at the elementary school. Kelly Burgess is an ESP special education at the elementary school. Mary Kate Healy as a grade one teacher at the elementary school. I just mentioned Sean McGinnis, assistant principal of Carver Middle High School. Natalie Drakeio is a grade five teacher at the elementary school. Benjamin Shafain as a math teacher at Carver Middle High School. Nathaniel Miller is a long-term sub-math teacher at Carver Middle High School. Caroline Doucet is a special education teacher at the elementary school. Kendall Follen is a grade one teacher at the elementary school. Jill Steinberg is an RBT in our pre-K program at the elementary school. And Bruce Savage is a new custodian at the elementary school. Our transfers. Lauren Ovian is an ESP pre-K from math interventionist. Lindsay Swanton as a reading teacher from a special, ah, sorry, yes, as a reading teacher from a, from a special education teacher. Zach LeBlanc as a phys ed teacher from a special education teacher at the middle high school. Jill Liddy as an adjustment counselor slash English teacher who's gonna be working in our CAP program from BCBA. Brooke Bishop is a special education teacher from interventionist at Carver Middle High School. Ginny Machado from interventionist to special education teacher at Carver Middle High School. Taylor Avery as a CDL driver and assistant mechanic from CDL Florida, assistant mechanic. Tishlebby is just transferring from kindergarten back from grade one. Casey Brown as a speech language pathologist part-time from, sorry, speech language pathologist assistant part-time from speech language pathologist assistant full-time. Abigail Simmons is a grade three teacher from ESP in special ed from the elementary school. And Sarah Baker is a food service utility from breakfast and food service worker at the elementary school. Since we last met, we actually have had, also had several resignations, which a lot of those positions above are filling. Maybe we should have done resignations first. Darby Lewis is a grade three teacher at the elementary school. Susan Welch is an ESP pre-K at the elementary school. Richard Lemon as a CDL bus driver. Christine Chambers as a French teacher at Carver Middle High School. Erica Renzi Gentili as an ESP math interventionist. Jessica Wild as a food service worker at the middle high school. Colleen Turner as a lunch monitor at the elementary school. Tracy Alberti as an ESP pre-K at the elementary school. Susanna Doyle is a grade three teacher at the elementary school. Julie Porter is a grade one teacher at the elementary school. Tanya Dawson is assistant principal at Carver Elementary School. And Barbara Barra is an ESP special education at Carver Middle High School. As of today, there are still three teaching, well, two teaching positions and one administrative position that's still open in the district, and a few ESP positions that we're working towards hiring all of them. Currently, the positions that are still open is an ASCAP teacher at the middle high school, a French teacher at the middle high school, and as you mentioned, the assistant principal position at the elementary school. We're actually moving towards finalists in all three of those positions and help, hope to have people on board by the middle of next week in actually all three positions. And then we saw, as I said, we still have some ESP positions to fill to start the school year. So there has been a lot of movement since last June, but we're excited to have all of our new staff here with us and wish good luck to those people who have either retired or resigned or moved on to different positions and give them, I think they're gonna have, hopefully they'll have great school years themselves as well. So that is our update in terms of personnel. As I said, there's a lot, a lot of movement, a lot of change since the end of last year.
Quite the list.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to what appears to be a very brief COVID-19 update.
Yes, we, we do have a brief COVID-19 update, and maybe this, I know this has been a standing agenda item for a couple of years, and maybe we can take it off the agenda as a standing agenda item. But I thought I should review the protocols that are put in place for the beginning of the year. And these were just actually officially released yesterday. The commissioner made an announcement last Monday, kind of highlighting what the changes were gonna be, and set a memo from DESI and DPH would follow. DESI and DPH released their memo yesterday. So briefly, really, it's put us in the same position we were in at the end of last year. So if a student or a staff member tests positive for COVID-19, the expectation is they would isolate for five days. That person can return to school or work once they have not had a fever or are feeling better on day six or after. If they do return during that time, if they are feeling better, then they, they are required to wear a mask in school from day six through 10. Just as a reminder to people, because I think there's sometimes confusion around this, and obviously the nurses will support staff and students. Day zero is the first day of symptoms or when you test positive. Day one is the first full day after your symptoms developed or after you test positive. So when you're, when you're establishing those five days, the day you test positive is actually considered day zero, the day after is considered day one, or that's when you have your, your, when your symptoms are, come on. So the next section is actually, I'm gonna read word for word from the memo. "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts is not recommending surveillance testing of asymptomatic individuals, contact tracing, or test and stay in schools. No asymptomatic student or staff member should be excluded from school or work as a result of exposure to a positive person, regardless of their vaccination status or setting of the exposure. If a person is exposed to a positive person, it's recommended, but not required, that they test themselves on day two and five from the date of their exposure." So in essence, this, that's where we were at the end of last year, in saying there's no contact tracing, there's in essence no close contacts. But last year at this time, we had tested, to, to have that stat, you had to have testing protocols in place. So we were participating in pool testing, we were sending home tests to families who wanted tests. And so that is no longer a requirement to follow this concept of, in essence, no contact tracing. You know, so we're just asking people to use their best judgment. If they're feeling ill, to test themselves, use a rapid test. We will still be participating in symptomatic testing in schools. So the nurses do have test kits, and if a student is symptomatic during the school day, and the nurses feel it's appropriate, they will test students. And you know, obviously, just like we had in the past, there's a consent process that parents have to go through. Be really clear that no one will be tested without the consent of their parents. Parents have to, both, they have to find, sign off on a ring consent, and then also, we didn't test anybody without calling their parents. So even parents did, we asked people to do the ring consent in advance. And then, but obviously, if there was a situation where a student needed to be tested in school, parents, guardians were always contacted before any test was administered, and that would be the same situation this year for symptomatic testing. So that, that's kind of the summary of the guidance. It's really a continuation of where we were at the end of the last year and where we were, you know, the, the policies and procedures we followed during our summer programs.
Great, thank you very much. Right? So I may say, I think everyone's okay with that not being a recurring agenda item, correct?
Right, yes.
So if there is
We'll bring it back if there's a reason to bring it back.
Or some type of change of some sort, then yeah, by all means, we can bring it back. But other than that, goodbye COVID line item agenda.
I guess I, the only thing I want to ask the committee your opinion on is maintain the COVID dashboard. You know, so obviously, we're still gonna be tracking students and staff who test positive, because our expectation is that parents are gonna report if they have a positive test at home. And there is an expectation we're following this guideline of the, you know, five-day isolation period. And then the six to 10 days of wearing a mask if they return to school or work. It, it's been a discussion amongst the social superintendents. I will say that my sense from those discussions is that a lot of districts are not gonna post the COVID dashboard. But I just wanted to get this committee's opinion on whether we continue to post the COVID dashboard. We're gonna have the data. You know, we could do it for a period of time and track it, see if anybody's looking at it. Or we could just not do it, it's really not, we're, we're tracking the numbers anyhow. So I just wanted to get your input. I didn't want to pull the COVID dashboard down without giving the committee some input on that.
What does that, I'm a numbers person, so if we have it, I say update it, but that's just my inclination. Because I'm a numbers person, so what does everyone else think?
I don't really have an opinion. I don't know the last time I personally checked it, so.
I mean, if it's not so much of a hardship to keep, um, keep the posting, I don't see a problem with it. And like you said, if we had an inquiry, we could always, you know, ask you about your numbers.
Yeah, I mean, there may be community members that would still be curious to know what the numbers are in school and stuff, so. If it's not a hardship, I don't see the harm in keeping it up.
In some ways, it's actually, it's probably a better reflection of, than even looking at the state website at this point, because, you know, ultimately, most people I think are doing personalized testing, and then they're not reporting that data to the state. So the state's only, you know, so even the number, even the projections they're making are really just projections based on those people actually take a test in a, you know, in the doctor's office or at the hospital, and then projecting that, those numbers out. Our numbers will actually be truer, hopefully closer to true, because, you know, hopefully people are reporting positive tests to us. I mean, so we, we can do it for September, and maybe October I'll just come back and say, we've been doing this for a month, and we can track how many people actually even go to the page. And if we find that people aren't going to the page, we can then discontinue it. But as I said, we have to track the numbers anyhow, so that's, that's what we'll do.
Great, thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay, so next, that brings us to the end of year audit, fiscal year.
Yeah, so this is a, a brief but good agenda item. So we just wanna, you know, so I linked in the background a copy of the end of the year audit report for FY21. We had a clean audit with no findings. So Ron should be commended for his management of the budget and the district's finances and the, and the end of the year audit report, and it's always good that we had a clean audit. So I just want to take a moment to congratulate Ron and the business office and everybody in the district for their work in terms of managing our district finances.
Yes, well done.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ron. And staff, please pass our, our kudos along to your staff, and thank you all for your efforts.
Moving on to professional development plans for 2223 school year, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Erickson.
Thank you. So I know that I present this annually, but I'm excited, as Tammy mentioned, to start the year with something that feels a little bit more normal than the past couple of years. And I believe I'm echoing the sentiments of all of our administrators who have spent so much time preparing health and safety protocols and all of those things that have definitely chewed up some of our professional development time over the past three years. So getting back to quote-unquote "normal", this presentation is just meant to really quickly structure our plans for the year ahead. And my thought is we'll talk really quickly about the characteristics of high-quality professional development, and then how we envision structuring that over the course of this year, given some constraints that we have around time and that sort of thing. And then we'll talk specifically about each school's plans, and I'll entertain any questions throughout the presentation that you might have. So in terms of characteristics of high-quality professional development, the research from the field is pretty clear that it's important to have goal-driven professional development with objectives, just like we do in a classroom, we have a learning objective, and that our professional development aligns with our educational blueprint and with our teacher's SMART goals or our school improvement plans. And so ultimately, all of that is based on an analysis of different data sets to make sure that we're improving and moving forward. The other piece is, obviously, learning is a social construct, and oftentimes, people will benefit and retain and implement a lot better if they have the opportunity to collaborate. So you'll see that our plan really does promote collaboration among educators and that the idea is that they can take what they're learning and apply it to the classroom, and that the experience itself will model effective pedagogy. And then lastly, is just the fact that it's not a one-and-done. So not having like a presenter come and speak, but having a plan so that our professional development is ongoing and job-embedded to support our professionals. So regarding the time and structure, over the course of the year, we have three full professional learning days, and then one and a half teacher choice days and four half-days, so that's the time that we have to work with. With the three professional development days that I mentioned, two are before students come at the beginning of the school year, and then we have one on election day. But professional learning does not just exist during those days. It also has an ongoing experience through our instructional coaches, so through our math coach and our literacy coach at the elementary school, and our department chairs at the middle high school. And then in terms of our models, we will have some whole district and school trainings, but responding to the needs assessment that we give annually to our teachers and our ESPs, we'll make sure that there is also ample time for grade level or departmental or content area trainings, and then something that we call strand work, which basically means that for our four half-days, that teachers select a specific focus point, and then when they come back together during each of the half-days, they revisit that topic and get the opportunity to have some learning and some collaborating time around that specific focai or foci. So in terms of the elementary, our key indicators this year for professional learning are, we obviously want to support the adoption of the new student-centered literacy model. And to do that, we'll have specific training on units of study phonics and small group differentiation. Grades four and five will be working with a new word study program. And then Kate Moore, our literacy coach, will have a daily coaching cycle. Will she, she'll be going into different classrooms and different grade levels and making sure that we mirror the work that is being done with the trainer that we've contracted with to support this model. And so the link to the educational blueprint is this will obviously enhance teaching and learning. We also want to increase math fluency, as our data suggests, for students in grades three through five. So that will be done through a book study that, again, mirrors that strand work model. So every time they come together, teachers will have a facilitated book study by our math coach, and we'll cover another area of the book, and then they'll go back and practice that. And then we will be embarking on our second year of student-centered math coaching, so that's a very specific cycle that our math coach runs, and that also enhances teaching and learning. And then we also want to increase students' sense of contribution and belonging through culturally responsive practice, and we'll be providing training and showcasing an array of cultures through hosting a community night. And that will hit supporting safe schools and engaging the community and enhancing teaching and learning. There are also lots of other things that happen during the year, but these are kind of the three large objectives, yeah, throughout the year. And then I also just want to pay mention to the fact that social, emotional learning and culturally responsive practices, I mentioned there, are embedded throughout these different experiences. So we want to make sure that that lives in all of those. In terms of our middle high school plans, a key indicator is to continue to develop strength and differentiate student-centered teaching, and that will be done through training on universal design for learning, or UDL, as well as the work that will be done on our pathways and project-based learning and vision of the graduate to support safe schools and enhance teaching and learning. And then lastly, to increase student engagement and real-world application of content. And that will be done by having our second project-based learning cohort get trained a couple of weeks from now in August, and making sure that the first cohort participants are supported and that we provide pathways coordination, and we really look at the results of our NIOSC collaborative conference and those priority areas, and we work on those. And then we offer the opportunity for data analysis for teaching and teacher collaboration. And the aggregate of all of those cover enhancing teaching and learning, leveraging leadership policy and funding, and supporting safe schools, and engaging the community. So again, those are kind of the bigger ticket items. Regarding the start of the school year, as I mentioned, we have the two days when we come back. We will follow the contractual agreements that we've made and make sure that at the onset, we have a district-wide welcome, and we have a breakfast, and Scott helps, or Scott facilitates that experience and does his keynote. And then both buildings will have a quick faculty meeting. And then at the elementary school, there will be opportunities for vertical planning, so teachers from one grade level will be able to talk to the teacher below them or above them in a structured manner. And then in the afternoon, at the elementary, there will be opportunity to work in classrooms. And at the middle high school, teachers will be trained on a software called My Flex Learning, which will help for the power hour or wind block, so that they know what they're doing when school starts with that. And then the next day, we'll be launching our strand work at the elementary school, including our work around literacy and, and the math fluency and the culturally responsive experience that I talked about earlier. And then at the middle high school, half of the day will be spent for universal design for learning. And then in the afternoon, teachers will have the opportunity to work in their classrooms. And our ESPs will participate in both of those experiences. So those are the first two days when we come back. And then I just want to make mention and share our appreciation of the many different hands that go into developing these plans over the course of the year. So I want to thank the school committee for your support. And then we do send out an annual needs assessment to all teachers, and we capture all of their feedback and help to craft this based on their responses. And the analysis of that is done by our Carver Public Schools Professional Development Committee, which meets monthly and really looks at how to support professional learning within the district. And there's a broad teacher voice on that. And then our instructional coaches and department chairs also look at the structure throughout the course of the year. And lastly, our administrative leadership team. So I just want to thank, again, the many folks that helped create this. Do you have any questions?
No, it sounds great.
I know, I, I thought it was a very thorough, great presentation. I just had one quick question, what a grade four to five word study, Lisa?
That's a great question. So when we, back in June, when we were talking about our rollout of the new literacy model, one of the areas that we recognized was the priority need, was really understanding word study in grades four through five, and our teachers asked for something very specific around that. So we did some research, and they're adopting a program. And word study basically is a combination of words and use, so things like vocabulary, along with etymology, so that's understanding prefixes, suffixes, Latin roots, Greek roots, and making sure that students have ample opportunity to understand and kind of do word attack. So that does help with long-term fluency and also increases reading ability if they're able to understand vocabulary at a higher level. So.
Very great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you for that stimulating presentation, Dr. Erickson. We appreciate all of your hard work and everyone's efforts in putting all those programs together.
Thank you.
So let's see, that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent.
Hey, we have, we have a long list of recommendations this evening.
We do.
We do. But I think they're all fairly quick, we'll, we'll find them.
Calendar?
First one, school calendar.
Right?
So two, there's two things that have changed here since you last approved the calendar. So first is we changed the day on one of the half-days. So the prom was originally scheduled, actually, the prom was originally scheduled for the fifth, then it moved to the 12th. Now it's moved back to the fifth. So the junior senior prom will be on May 5th. The last approved calendar had the half-day on May 12th, so we're just asking to move the half-day in May to May 5th to support the junior senior prom. And then the other thing is, you know, we were looking at what was on the calendar in terms of identifying holidays and events in the community that really more so the teachers and staff and administration should be aware of when these events are occurring as they're working with students and families. So we've added the dates of the major Muslim holidays onto the calendar on the side. So the two changes since last time was approved. Uh so the two changes since last time it was approved was the addition of a couple of the Muslim, the key Muslim holidays. Uh and also the change of um the May fifth half, the May twelfth to May fifth half day. Uh so our recommendation is that we make a motion to uh approve the updated calendar for distribution to families.
I make a motion to approve the updated school calendar for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for updating it and um adding those holidays.
Appreciate that.
We appreciate it.
All right. So moving on, our next agenda item is actually the presentation of the middle and high school handbook changes. And we'd like to welcome um the new interim principal of Carver Middle High School. She hasn't come before the committee yet uh in that role, Christine Cabral. And the interim middle school uh principal Dylan Antel. Uh so excited for both Christine and Dylan to be here. Uh and I know, just want to take a moment to say that, you know, Christine and Dylan and Sean uh and and Mike Schultz over the summer have been working very hard uh to plan this transition. You know, so obviously it it is a major shift in administration, uh but they've done an outstanding job in the in the past six weeks uh preparing for the opening of school uh with a real focus on um climate and culture and and making a positive experience for all of our students at Carver Middle High School. And so Christine and Dylan, I just want to say to both of you, I've done a great job in the first few weeks in your new interim roles.
This is my second day.
Your second day officially. You have been working throughout the summer in that transition. So but the four, the four of them, as I said, including Mike Schultz, who affi- Mike officially began his leave yesterday. Uh but the four of them have been working collaboratively over the summer uh and planning for the transition to next year. So Dylan is actually going to present the changes for both the middle school and the high school handbook. Uh just because Sean was unable to be here this evening because as we mentioned earlier, uh he's transitioning his daughter to college. Uh so do I do middle school first, Dylan? Do you have a preference?
Yeah, well, most of the changes are similar and the same when all the big tickets items are the same. So I don't necessarily think we have to go through each one, um but I'll defer to everybody else what they think.
Well, why don't we go through the middle school one and then if there's something that's in, that's not. If there's a piece that's in the high school, we'll look at that piece specifically.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Um so I know Scott and the administrative team really well, but I don't know if I've ever actually formally met everybody. So I'm Dylan Antel. I'm going into my tenth year in education, my seventh year in Carver. Um I'm part of the movement Scott talked about, any touch on? So I'm moving from a special education teacher to our interim middle school assistant principal. I served as our interim high school assistant principal at the end of last year, so that's just a little bit about me. Um so for the middle school handbook changes, most of the changes on here are really procedural. It's um titles, dates, uh it's now Dr. Erickson and assistant superintendent, so that got changed everywhere. And we changed all our dates to twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three and it's a lot of of just procedural stuff. So I wanted to hit on three kind of big ticket items. And those are our win block, our uh description of Saturday school and um our drafted policy on student lockers. Um so our win block, that's on page two. Yep, there it is. Thanks, Scott. Um so our win block, the acronym is WHATINEED. And it's a sixty minute block carved out into the middle of the school day where students are free to wisely choose how to spend those sixty minutes. This coincides with our lunch, so it goes from ten forty-nine to eleven forty-nine. Uh first lunch is ten forty-nine to eleven seventeen, then eleven twenty-one to eleven forty-nine. And it's when teachers offer enrichment activities for students four days out of the seven day cycle with one day reserved as an advisory, um where teachers would help students sign up for what they would do the rest of the cycle, the rest of the six days. Um and it's really, we wanted to help foster more of a connection for students in school. Um you know, get to see their teachers as someone that doesn't just teach the curriculum. They have other interests and you can have shared interest and in the hopes of students will be a little bit more. Might add some excitement to come in every day and know that you can do meditation for a half hour with who would have been your chemistry teacher. Things like that. So it's all geared towards student choice. Um it focuses on individual improvement. And what's available or what we have drafted right now available during win block is club activities, class meetings, enrichment activities, student led initiatives, um an open gym, study groups, guidance meetings, extra help, academic boot camps, homework help, um work on projects, peer tutoring and really um but trying not to limit it to the imagination, whatever wants to be offered based upon student choice. As Meredith said, we're going to use My Flex Learning software um to do this. We have um our staff were trained briefly at the end of last school year. He's coming in again during the first professional development day. And Christine, Sean and I are attending a training tomorrow. So we'll learn more about the software that way and everything it can do. Um students that don't meet the behavioral expectations during this time are going to lose their ability to choose. Um what they're going to do, we'll work with administration and their advisor, how to more structure their time, whether it's get extra help on an assignment um during teacher extra help sessions. Um just the overall goals is really to increase opportunities for all students, allow time for students and enrichment activities, allow for a more personalized education, uh decrease the overall number of failing grades within any course at the middle high school and increase overall class averages for all students. Any questions? Yes.
I do have a question. Um so the My Flex Learning where they'll schedule their win block. Will that interface with Aspen or will parents have a lot like if like if, just for example, if I wanted to, you know, I have a daughter in middle school, so I'll use her as an example, but I'm sure other parents, like if I want to see what she signed up for or kind of keep track of, is there a way that parents can access what their students are signing up for or? Just curious.
I believe so. So each student.
It interfaces with Aspen.
So the designer of My Flex Learning was actually the the one of the original founders and designers of Aspen.
Oh, that's neat.
So that that person, that person has left Aspen, but clearly it's designed to integrate with it and does so because it's actually the same designer. I I think it's a good question in terms of, and it's it's a question for us tomorrow. I don't know if we have the answer in terms of uh because there is a training tomorrow with them of will the parents be able to see it through Aspen and see what what uh extracurricular activities kids are signing up, their students, their their kids are signing up for. And so I honestly, I don't know the answer to that question, but it's a good one. Then we'll put on the agenda for one unless one of you two know the answer to that question. Yeah.
And I guess adversely too, I mean students like Rena found her schedule on Aspen before I even knew it was up there and then she was like, Mom, my schedule's up. So I know that the kids know how to get into Aspen and look at their schedules. So it'd be, I guess it'd be good for them too if once they're signed up.
The kids will definitely be able to access My Flex Learning.
Oh, okay.
They're going to go in, they're going to go in and make their choices through My Flex Learning.
Oh, okay.
What's going to happen is, sorry if I, what's what's going to happen is during the, and it's a seven, during the seven day cycle, day one's going to be the advisory day. In advi- in the advisory day, the requirement is all the teachers will have to have the options for the next six days posted.
Okay.
And the T, the kids will go in during class uh on their Chromebooks or I believe there's going to be an app on the phone, which is a another. I know phones are a little piece of discussion, but there'll be an app on their phone where they will be able to access and sign up for their their selections for the six days. And the idea is the advisor is just making sure everyone gets signed up. And there's a process in which the administration is going to have to manage uh the student didn't sign up for something. Or that there's this where holes are or this this didn't, this offering only has a couple of students signed up and do we want to actually go forward with that? So the administration after that day one advisor is going to have to look at all that. But the students are going to have full access to it. They're the ones who are going to sign themselves up uh through the program and will have access to it.
That all sounds very exciting.
So so through at least through your students account, you'll be able to have access. I think it's a great question though. Would you be able to log into Aspen and see it? And that I'm just not sure about.
And they're required to sign up, correct?
Yes. Yeah. So they're required to sign up for the next six days with the um guidance of their advisor.
And is there something in place for the behavioral kids to incentivize them to get back into it rather than?
Yeah, all of the fun things I think we're going to offer. I mean, like open gym, you can go to open gym when you have shown us that you can and you can improve your overall school performance. It's really all based on student choice and accountability.
Got it.
Okay, um the next big ticket item was Saturday school description. So this is on page three of that document. Um we piloted a Saturday school last year. Um and I, we agreed that it was successful and worth keeping. Um we think it decreases or minimizes lost class time due to out of school suspensions. So it's just another um element in our code of conduct. So what Saturday school is, students will come in um on a Saturday. We have it twice per month. It's every other Saturday from eight AM to eleven AM. It's at the middle high school. The location is to be determined based upon who the advisor is that day. It's a stipend position and it, there's two advisors for it. So depending upon who it is that week, that's the room that you go to. Can be assigned for things like excessive and unexcused tardiness, um cutting attention, cutting multiple classes, leaving campus without permission, insuancy and other nonviolent, non disrespectful actions. Um major infractions would still lead to an out of school suspension, but this is just our way to decrease that. Um as I said, staffing's one teacher will be present. The rules are students are expected to come with work and reading assignments and things to do. Um it's to be done quietly and all school rules still apply. Students can be dismissed from Saturday school due to noncompliance and misbehavior. And if that is to happen, the next step in the code of conduct continues. So it's not, including but not limited to an out of school suspension. Questions on that?
Anyone? No? Thank you.
Okay. Not not a change, but I actually want to add this in just so the com- committee is aware is that in terms of the handbook uh in school suspension was not actually taken out of the handbook. Uh but we did have in school suspension last year since, really since COVID really. Uh so the, we are actually returning in school suspension, just while the committee and the community be aware of that. It's not a handbook change because it never came out of the handbook.
Right.
Uh it's there, uh but it's two days, we're planning two days a week. So we're going to be doing two days a week of in school suspension as also another alternative uh to out of school suspensions and to uh you know, we generally feel like that was an effective program. Uh and so we're uh glad that we have that return.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
And our last big ticket item was student lockers. So we found before the pandemic, uh most students weren't utilizing a locker. And we decided to move away from that during the pandemic just for um I guess close contacts and people staying in the hallway. So our thought was we'd like to bring lockers back by student request. Um if a student would like access to a locker, um they can come to the office, request one, we will get them the um give them one that's available, their combination will, and a lot of students have never used it. So we'll we'll teach them how to do that. The lock and the combination can be tricky. Um and we'll just keep a running list and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Um everything else is really procedural, just so you guys know kind of where we're going and where we envision the handbook going. So through this year, we plan on having a handbook committee and looking for more of a, like a complete handbook overhaul. Members of the committee, our thoughts would be students, we'd like faculty, families, guardians, administrators, um especially with a lot on that student voice. Um because a lot of times we do handbooks without actually talking to the students that it that it impacts the most. We're looking towards potentially shifting from two handbooks to one giant um grade six to twelve handbook. And during that, all throughout the year and all the overhaul, we're going to look at different pol- policies, potentially revise a lot of policies again with the student voice and it's going to be ongoing throughout the year. Um I believe we have a a list of students that came to us at the end of last year that are interested in being a part of it. So I believe Sean and I are going to reach out and spearhead that to the students and send an email to families and faculty and see who would like to be involved and set dates and get that going.
Awesome. Cool. Okay, thank you.
Is there anything, do you, anything different in the high school handbook? Do you want to highlight or no? You think it's all?
It's, those are all the same things. Everything else was procedural there too. Those are the three big items in both.
Okay, I have one question.
Absolutely.
Seeing as how Mr. Neef hit a little bit of a trigger word. Um all right, no, really. Um are there any changes? Clearly you have not presenting any changes to cell phones, but um it, do you have plans to communicate the expectations with those to students coming in in the fall?
Absolutely. So coming out of the pandemic, I think that we relaxed with a lot of policies, cell phones being one of them. So we're going to implement the cell phone policy as it's written in both handbooks. We did a faculty survey at the end of last year and it was something that faculty agreed um that we need to do a better job of monitoring the cell phones. And faculty agreed to be with us on that and support. Faculty wants support with the cell phones, administration wants to support faculty with the cell phones. Um so we're going to do it as it's written. In the middle school, it says students can access their cell phone during breakfast and lunch. If they access it during and end with um teacher guidance if it goes along with the assignment. Other than that, their cell phone can be confiscated, given to me as the middle school assistant principal, and it can only be returned to a parent or guardian. The high school is very similar. It just allows for use of cell phones during passing time. So without teacher guidance, um the policy is that it shouldn't be in the classroom.
Okay. Thank you. I I'm sure that that will answer some questions for also for some folks at home, given um some of the issues that popped up last year.
I have a question. I don't know if it's within the scope of what we're discussing right now, but if confiscated, are you able to read the context of text um any any content on on the actual cell phone about parent discussion? I suppose it would be for some disciplinary movement. I guess I'm wondering what the whole investigation process like that looks like, but I don't know if that's even what we're talking about. Who's careless?
So it works both ways, like for, I think what Dylan just explained, if a student is looking at their phone in the classroom or it's distracting instruction, in that case, the teacher would take the phone and say, or may take the phone and turn it into the office. It would be returned to the parent, but we're not really interested in what was on the phone in that moment. That's more like that's just interfering with instruction and learning. Um and other scenarios, do we, is our roles as assistant principals, have we seen context of phones? Yes, but that is. The students want to show you what's on their phone, you know, either they're reporting on each other. So do we see contents of phones? Yes, um and it it helps you to really accurately do your job as an assistant principal because what the students need to know is once it's out there, it's out there, right? You can't take that back. Um so it's helpful in that case. Um if a student did not want to show us their phone, then we're not going to look at their phone, right? Then we would contact a parent and have a conversation with the parent, maybe involve the skee- school resource officer. Um he's a great resource for parents and for training parents on how to search your own child's phone. Um so we call him in for meetings a lot too. Um so we would never force an issue to look at a phone, but yes, we look at phones.
Thank you. Anybody else? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh we will, we do need a motion and a vote to approve both and we probably need, because they are, they are separate documents. So we do need a motion on the middle school handbook and a motion on the high school.
I have one other question. I'm so sorry.
Absolutely.
I was just looking at the little summary pages for each of them. And on the middle school one, it, there was no, nothing below that I could find, but it says remove crusader pride. What was that?
Oh, yes. So that um for students that got a one for excellence and effort and conduct. Before the pandemic, we had a crusader pride assembly where students would be honored. Um since we've moved more to the team model, teams do their own ceremonies.
Okay.
So they're still honored, just in a different way.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what it meant. I was like, what is that?
Sad, but crusader pride was the.
Be.
Assembly and I'm repeating what Dylan said, but once we had the pandemic, the teams did their own separate awards. Um but we are looking at putting some things, making some changes at the end of the year. This year, not to bring back crusader pride necessarily for all six to eight, because I think the team teachers have found it very positive to celebrate within the team structures. But we'd like to look at an eighth grade commencement ceremony and awards a ceremony, something for the end of um eighth grade. And we'll let the students know about these new traditions that we're starting for them at the beginning of the school year.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, the team days were very exciting days last year, I know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Okay, I think we have the start of a motion.
Um I'll make a motion to approve the handbook changes for the middle s- school handbook.
Aye, a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Without any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the changes to the high school handbook.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. No comments? Um all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you both very much for for coming. And we wish you both the best of luck in your first.
Thank you both for stepping up and taking on these interim roles.
Exciting year.
Yes, thank you.
You also match very nicely.
Yeah.
Very coordinated.
They're displaying their cohesiveness at the middle high school.
They're displaying their cohesiveness at the middle high school.
Hi, next we have the elementary school handbook. So Doc, Dr. Jessica Pinella, and I think Ruby's going to join her as well. We'll review some of the change, or the proposed changes for the elementary handbook for this year.
Thank you very much, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Yep, so learned a lot by thoroughly going through the handbook in this role, I really did. And, you know, we made some of the, there aren't many changes that were made. The more basic ones for staff changes and new voicemails that you would expect. But Dr. Erickson, she became handbook official with the doctor, so that's exciting. Probably the most exciting change to the handbook was personal dress and appearance for students, because it was very gender specific. It seemed to be leaning in a certain way towards how girls were dressed, with spaghetti straps and whatnot. So the language was completely changed. And what propelled that was persuasive essays and assignment in fifth grade. So they wrote persuasive essays, a lot of the girls saying that the handbook in that particular section should be looked at, because it's not fair. And that went into, you know, Mrs. Miestis brought that to my attention. We took it seriously and listened to student voice. And Mrs. Miestis presented it to the school council members who also looked at it. And I worked with Joyce McCrina, a third grade teacher, and Dr. Sharon King, who's a parent of Carver Elementary School also. And we met a few times and communicated through the different drafts with questions that we had. But the revised personal dress and appearance section is much more geared towards weather, safety, and making sure that the manner of dress correlates with the values of the school. So it was generalized that way. And throughout the handbook, we also changed the language from he slash she to student throughout. Trying to think of any other major changes to the handbook. There was another change that was the school committee members. Your email addresses for Carver are in it with the removal of personal information. And there's a new section that came from the, it was legal counsel, which is about student directory information being released. And it discusses a parent's role in that as well. And those were all of the changes that were made to the handbook.
That sounds, that's great. Yeah, it really sounds great. Thank you very much for listening to the student voices. I'm sure those essays were quite robust. Yes, I'm sure. Does anyone have any questions?
I think it's a great change. I just noticed, and I apologize, I'm not trying to be nitpicky. Where addresses hats, it still says boys or girls, and I wonder if you may want to just make that students within the school building may not wear hats of any kind.
That was the old one, I included the old.
Oh.
Personal dress, so it was, I wanted you to see the before and after. Because I thought it was a major change, so you could see what issue the students had.
I was like, I thought she said they took that out.
No, we took that out, yeah, there's no, there's no, yeah.
And all, all that's.
Yeah, okay.
So all of that is out, that whole section.
And it becomes, students are expected to dress appropriately specifically in regard to weather and safety. Coherence should be made in alignment with our core values.
Gotcha.
But I thought you'd be interested for the comparison for the before and after.
I was reading it going, I'm not really sure what they changed here.
Really?
It makes so much more sense now.
Right.
It does seem kind of like ancient when you look at what we had in there.
Yeah.
You know, it just kind of points to how far we've come, we really have. And the essays from the students were actually very impressive. It was good to read them and to hear, you know, well, first of all, that they had read the handbook themselves and they were, they were analyzing it and they were taking some real important factors into consideration as they wrote me their persuasive essay.
Right. And it's an evolving document, I guess is the takeaway, you know, and it needs to reflect our school and the way the world is now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Great.
I appreciate that.
I'm thrilled, thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the updates to the elementary school handbook.
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to the elementary school handbook.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for joining us and for all of your hard work.
Thank you very much for being, Beth.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And moving on to our next agenda item is the school committee meeting calendar. So just a little bit of a change, the proposal here is to have our meetings be three weeks apart. And then there's, there's a couple allowances in there either because of the, really around breaks. And it actually, I thought when we laid this out, it actually fit nicely. So it does have us have a month between this meeting and our next meeting, primarily because three weeks was Labor Day. So, but then when we started on September 12th and went three weeks from there, I thought it actually laid out nicely by only having one meeting in December, so we would have a second meeting close to the holiday season. So I know sometimes that's a struggle for people. And then we do have, you know, several meetings in January and February where we're into the budget season. You know, sometimes we even have to add an additional meeting in there if we need to do that, we'll do that. The other thing that just fell nicely in the calendar in terms of Monday meetings is we do have a March 13th meeting, which is actually exactly 30 days prior to town meeting. So there is that bylaw that the school committee votes the budget 30 days prior to town meeting. So we could go all the way out to March 13th to vote the budget if we needed to. And still that, and that actually falls, as I said, exactly 30 days before the scheduled town meeting. You know, then obviously at the end of the year, we could make a decision if we added a meeting in June based on this calendar. So it's Monday meetings that are in general three weeks apart. You don't have to make a motion or vote to approve this, but you could, it's really your choice. There's no legal requirement to do so, we could just say we're all good with it. But whatever, the will of the committee. Or obviously you can make suggestion changes.
Well, we should remove August 15th because that was yesterday.
Yeah, so August 16th.
Sorry.
We gotta edit, August 16th, it's updated August 16th.
Yeah, that was, that was my fault for changing the data today. I think, I think the dates look great and it's, I'm thankful that it fell.
How, how many from last year to how many this?
I didn't, we didn't actually do that analysis because we met a few extra times last year. Because we were still doing COVID. We, I think we cut off the two, doing two a month in.
December.
Yeah, I think we did two, we did two up, we did two a month up until December.
And then we were once a month in the second.
No. Ultimately, if you went back, if you went pre-COVID, in essence, there was usually 11 meetings. One in the summer and then the 10 months that school was in session.
So it was 14.
And then so there's three additional meetings.
I was just hoping with this new rotation that we actually can keep the meetings in a reasonable amount.
Yeah, and I, I think that was part, part of the goal, I think for the discussion was that, you know, in the spring, we felt like we were doing a meeting once a month, but a lot of our agendas were pretty action packed. And we all, as you know, the meetings were lasting until 10, 10 o'clock at night, 10, 10:30 at night. So, you know, like, so there was a suggestion of why don't we have, you know, add a couple, couple of meetings and try to really work hard to keep the meetings to two hours, you know? And, you know, well, obviously sometimes our meetings have run long, but I think it's for a good reason because we've done a lot of celebrations and recognitions and we've talked about continuing that.
Sure.
You know, we didn't have any specific recognitions for tonight, but in September we will. And we'll, we'll start that process of, you know, on a regular meeting basis, having recognitions and celebrations. Which sometimes take the first 20 or 30 minutes of a meeting with our student ambassadors presentations and our student council presentations and the recognitions. But I think that that's, it's really great for us to celebrate those things and show those things to the community. And I think the committee itself obviously enjoys those presentations and, yeah, so I, I think this will, this will work out well.
Very good.
Has anybody seen a date on it that jumps out at them as a conflict for some reason?
Not right now.
I checked and everything looks good on my calendar, so.
I mean, somewhat good. You know, we could maybe zoom in or someone could miss, right?
Yeah, and then obviously we could always, you could always revise this, like I said, there's no requirement that, what? There's a, there's no requirement that you voted, and even if you did vote it, doesn't mean you couldn't revise it if you need to in the future.
Yep, hopefully there won't be a.
But the open meeting law ruling was extended so that you can meet remotely.
Through the end of March.
Through the end of March.
So the current open meeting law procedures and policies are in place through March 31st.
Right, so if there was a conflict, you could zoom in.
Yep.
Yep, hopefully there'll be no other reason for us to do Zoom.
Right, yes.
As a committee as a whole, ever again.
Do we need to at least approve the next meeting?
We don't, but like I said, if you want to make a motion to approve the whole calendar, it certainly can, it doesn't hurt, it's not a bad thing to do.
It's up to you.
So make such a motion.
And if you keep it fluid, then, you know, if some date came up, maybe we could work with each other.
From, from an open meeting, I said, but it's just our requirement to post any meeting that's going to happen at the school committee 48 hours prior.
Do we post in general though, in the past have we posted our listing?
Yeah, we'll put these meeting dates on this, these meeting dates will go on the website.
Yes.
On the school committee section.
So.
So then we should probably do a motion to approve it if it's going to get posted on the website.
I would prefer.
I, I'll make a motion to approve these meeting dates for the Carver School Committee.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Here's, here's hoping for, right, more consistently short meetings.
Well, I'm hoping for not a five day power outage in the middle of October again.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be great.
That would be fantastic.
You and the rest of town.
October 24th date, and I think that was around the time last year.
No one wants to go back to that, oh my goodness gracious.
Okay.
It's all ruined my Halloween plans, like really?
Right, I know, it just threw everything off.
Inevitably every year.
Every year.
And right, and inevitably.
Do not speak it into existence.
I know, right.
I, I agree 100%. Okay, so that brings us to our school committee policy manual updates, seeing as how we're on a roll with policies and updates.
So we've been looking at a lot of policies over the last few months. And I think that is, I think that's how to take a look at the policy manual as a whole. So, you know, the Mass Association of School Committees has a policy service that provides updates to schools district policy manuals. And if you really look at our manual, there are many policies that are from 2000, 2001, 2002. So really you can tell that the school committee at that time, 20, over 20 years ago, went through a process of revising the entire manual. And really many of our policies have become outdated and I think it makes sense for us to go through a similar process. The Mass Association of School Committees offers such a service. The service costs $10,000 and would take the committee through a process to revise and update the entire manual over the course of a year, year and a half. The policy subcommittee will work with the Mass Association of School Committees through a process of presenting approximately one section of the manual per month. And we're, we're talking to them right now whether we're going to do that one every, now, because now we're meeting every three weeks. We will be actually going to turn around and do one section every three weeks, depending on the size of the section, depending on the depth of it, depending on the policies contained in that section. Because some of these policies we're also going to refer to legal counsel on. So there might be times where we can turn one around at each meeting, there might be times where we need two weeks, or sorry, should I say two weeks, two meetings to turn around a section. And ultimately, this is a decision of the committee to decide if you want to engage mask in this process and obviously to expend the $10,000 to do so. And it is, it would be my recommendation that we move and take a vote to work with the Mass Association of School Committees to review and revise the school district's policy manual. Any, any questions or thoughts?
I don't have any questions, I mean, I am personally very excited about this opportunity as well as the cost associated with this. Because we have done a lot of policy work over the last, only the last few years. And the expense does add up quite quickly. So this is really one way for us to manage that cost. Like Scott had said, there are, will be some policies that we will have school council look at to make sure that it's update, updated with the most recent case law and those types of things. But I am a proponent of bringing our handbook up to date. So we can stay relevant and make, make sure that we're, you know, in line with where we should be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very arduous task and I'd say, in the three years that I've been on the, well, two and a half years that I've been on the committee, we've updated a lot of policies, but since April, I've been on the policy subcommittee and, you know, looking at our old policy and looking at the, you know, mask offers, recommended templates. So we're pulling their templates and we're comparing it and trying to figure out, you know, what needs to be updated? What do we have that's archaic or out of date or, you know, what have you or not, you know, doesn't conform to even new laws and regulations that have gone in. It's very time consuming and so they can do it much faster than what we would be able to do. If we were to continue it on our own, it would take a lot more than a year to a year and a half. And it would probably end up costing more money because we would have to lean on council even more. So when we met with our mask advisor, Jim, you know, he mentioned that they offered this and he went through with the policy subcommittee a very detailed process of what they do and how, you know, they, they literally go through our policy and update it and look for inconsistencies. They look for places where stuff might be repetitive, they look for places where, you know, we're not in line with current laws and regulations. And they do a lot of that work for us so that we can really be focused on just making sure we're, you know, our time's better served than doing a lot of that manual laborious work. So I think that it's well worth the time and money.
Yeah, I mean, I second that because we have been doing a lot of policy updates piecemeal to do a comprehensive overview and get, get through it and get it out there and be accurate and consistent and be efficient.
Consistency would be great.
Absolutely, plus, right, plus ease of access for everyone too. Because we want to be clearly as transparent as we can be with our policies in case anyone in the district or beyond wants to look at them, they'll be readily available and easily accessible to everyone. So clearly, I'm sure Jen and I would still, would give updates to the committee on how things are going, with what section we're working on. Policies will still come to the, the sections will come to the committee for overall approval. So we'll still be involved in the, some of the nitty gritty, not as much as we would have been thankfully.
Right.
But we both feel this is a really good investment.
Agreed.
So. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move that we contract with Mass Association of School Committee to review and revise the Carver Public School Manual.
I will second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, staying with the theme of policies, we have a lot, we have a lot of policies, we have a lot of policies coming up. So the first, the first four I've grouped together. And there's a reason, a rationale for that. So right now, we're actually currently involved in the second phase of what's called the TFM, the tiered focused monitoring process, which we've talked about as a committee a couple of times. TFM is actually a overview through the Department of Education on the district's compliance with special education, civil rights laws and DESI requirements. And it, it used to be a process that happened once every six years. And then they broke it down to two, broke it into two parts. So there's, every three years you do half of the compliance review. This year, this is actually an add-on to that process, which we were selected for, which is great. Which is fine actually, because our policies will update on this. So as part of this process, we were actually specifically selected as a district to review our policies concerning student enrollment. And there's four specific policies that we need to review, update and/or approve because they're new to be compliant with current laws and DESI regulations around enrollment of homeless students, foster students and children of military families. So there's four policies here. And all these revisions of these policies are consistent with the current MASC recommendations. I've also sent these four policies to our DESI liaison. So through the homeless, every school district has a liaison to guide you in managing homeless and foster care students. Sometimes the process is complicated, so they, they actually assign someone to work with each district. So if there is a complicated case in regards to homelessness or a foster care situation, we actually work in conjunction with DESI to manage those cases. And many times, I think DESI does that because a lot of times, in terms of transportation costs, where the student can attend school, sometimes there's a conflict between different school districts. Because students have options in regards to attending and where they actually align their head, where they live, versus where they're what's called their district of origin. And so the. Uh, and so there's, sometimes there's best district, best interest determination meetings, so there's a lot that goes into this process. So, but the, the good thing about that is we have someone who we work directly with through, uh, DESI in terms of managing these things. So I took these four policies and sent them to our DESI liaison, uh, who oversees homeless and foster care, to review them and say, is this gonna be consistent, is this gonna meet the standards that the department's looking for through the TFM process? So, through MSAC, MASC, and through our liaison, has let me know that the, the policies that are here for you to review this evening are consistent with DESI's current regulations and would be approved as part of this TFM process. Uh, we have to submit these updated policies to DESI by the end of October. Uh, so my goal tonight would, tonight would be a first reading of these policies, we'd bring them back in September for a second reading. Uh, if approved at that time, then we'd be able to forward them as part of our review process to meet the compliance piece. So, let's look at the four policies, and I, I'll spend as much or as little time on these policies as you want. I wanted to start with a kind of a generic overview. The generic overview is the first policy on the list, homeless student enrollments rights. If you look at this one, this one has a lot of revisions and changes. Maybe, it opens up, there it is. Yeah, so strikeouts are things we're taking out of the policy, red is new language. So if you go through this policy, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of red. And part, most of the red is actually aligned with, uh, the, both the federal and the state government kind of updated their guidance on how to manage homeless students. And in terms of when they're enrolled and what districts they have to attend. The basic concept is still the same, that if a student is deemed as homeless, they actually have a choice. They have a choice of attending their district of origin where they, or they can attend where they actually are, are living in their homeless situation. So if a student was in the Wareham Public Schools, grew up in Wareham, always lived in Wareham, was displaced, became homeless and now was living in Carver. Uh, and we became aware of that situation, we deem the student as homeless, at that point, the student now has a choice. They can attend school in Wareham, even though they're living in Carver, because they're a homeless student. You know, they're lying their head every night in Carver, or they can attend in Carver. And then we, the, this kind of outlines what they're entitled to in terms of transportation, who has responsibility for transportation, who ensures what district the student's gonna go through. And some of the regulations around this change, that's why there's a lot of red in this policy. A lot of the strikeouts are actually, many of the strikeouts here are actually re, in regards to, uh, students in, unaccompanied youth and children and youth in state care or custody. That goes back to the foster care piece. So this policy actually used to comp, used to have both foster care and homeless kind of together. And it was the recommendation at the time that the McKinney-Vento Law was passed, which is your homeless law, that allows homeless services. So, the, if I close that one out and we look at the children in foster care, the third policy here, you'll notice this one's all red, cause we don't have this policy, this is just a brand new policy. And it actually, what the recommendation now is, in essence, you have two separate policies. You have a whole policy specifically about homeless students, and you have a policy specifically about students in foster care. And so that's why this policy is totally new, and it's, and that's why there's so much redactions from the first policy, cause it's taking kind of one policies and separating them out into two policies. In terms of military children, just a policy we haven't had in place, we don't deal a lot with this, but under federal law, uh, students of military families have rights in terms of enrollment. As I said, it's actually not an issue the Carver Public School deals with often, uh, but we felt it was important. Uh, and I will say through the TFM review process, this policy is not a requirement. So the foster care policy is a requirement, the homeless policy is a requirement, you have to have those policies in place, and this is their recommendations. The educational opportunities for military children is, um, strongly recommended. We're not required, the school committee does, it doesn't have to adopt this, it's not an expectation that they have it. Uh, but my, my opinion to me, obviously, A, it's strongly recommended, B, it makes sense to institute, uh, this policy in terms of the rights that children of, uh, military families have within the Carver Public Schools. And then the third one is just some minor changes in terms of our school, uh, sorry, the fourth one is some minor changes in regards to our, um, school, uh, admissions policy. Some of it's grammatical and just, you know, the recommended policy uses the word district instead of town. Generic spring versus April in terms of enrollment for, uh, kindergarten students. And that proof of residency is, is may be required beyond the other things here, which is proof of age and vaccination versus is required. And again, that's consistent with what the recommendations from both DESI and, uh, MASC is on this school admissions policy. So the, the four of these policies together would bring us up to date. Uh, many of the things stated in the policies is what is the policies and procedures we follow. So we, we've been working with DESI on our homeless situations, we were working with DESI on our foster care situations, and DESI's guiding us through actually following what, so this isn't gonna be a huge change in what we do, it's gonna make our policies current, so it's actually the policies say what we're actually doing, which is consistent with, uh, the expectations. So, as I said, my recommendation is this is just the first reading tonight, uh, that the, the opportunity, the committee has again an opportunity to review them, and then we bring all four policies back, uh, in, uh, September, uh, for a vote for approval, which would allow us to move forward and, uh, send these in as part of our review process with the state. So I don't know if there's any questions at this time on those four policies.
Anyone? Thank you.
Scott?
Thank you, Scott.
Alright, so moving on, we'll go to, uh, and Ron's gonna actually talk about the next two, cause he was more directly involved in terms of initiating some of the changes in those policies. So the first one is a first, uh, I listed here as a first reading of, uh, the policy for food service account management, pricing, and payment.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Neef, uh, so you're gonna hear some of the same themes that, um, Mr. Neef just alluded to. The structure's very much the same, what you've seen in front of you, the strikeouts are struck out, and new language is, you know, red. The impetus for the change here is twofold, uh, recommendations coming from the USDA as well as DESI, and, uh, again, similar themes to what Mr. Mr. Neef mentioned. This language really brings us, uh, our policy language in line with what we're already doing on the ground. The big theme here is singular, that is, the focus of our process and our procedures, and now this policy, is to ensure that any student, regardless of their ability to pay, gets a lunch, and that there is no action taken that points that out to their peers, men or other, you know, people in the school. Again, I want to underscore that's something we've already do in Carver, we've already been doing.
You may remember just, oh yeah, sorry. Sorry about that, there we go.
Community at home.
Right, you, um, you may remember just before the pandemic, actually, there was a, I don't know, it was a national story, but it was a story that came on the news, there was a number of school districts where like folks in the lunch team were actually withholding food from kiddos in the lunch line because they owed money for previously unpaid debts. Again, I want to underscore, Carver does not do that, we never have done that. But anyway, USDA got ahold of that as a DESI, and they put forward this recommended language that you see here, that essentially, again, bars school districts from, um, withholding any food from kiddos, or from making a spectacle of them because their family is behind on something. That's the real gist of it, I'll answer any questions you've got, it goes into great detail about it here, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions?
One thing that we're all happy about, I think we all know at this point that, um, lunch is free this coming school year. Thank you to that pilot program, hopefully it will be adopted permanently going forward. So one thing that we had talked about when, uh, Ron presented this to the policy subcommittee was, um, we were recommending that we waive the second reading, and we approve this policy just so it can be in place for the start of school. If no, if anyone doesn't have any objection to that, that was, um, our recommendation.
Thank you for that.
So, absolutely, thank you for all of your efforts, the food service efforts were, were very fortunate. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Just as a procedural piece, uh, because it was listed as a first reading, just in the motion, we need to say that we're making a move, make a motion to waive the second reading and approve the policy as.
Okay, okay, it's in like this bottom line of the, um, paragraph.
Yep.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we waive the second reading and approve this policy this evening, that we approve policy EFD, Food Service Account Management, Pricing and Payment as presented.
I will second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ron, if I may ask, I know I, I asked this at the, when we met on this in the policy subcommittee, were you able to get any clarification on whether the free meals that were approved by the state is truly all meals, or is it just lunch?
It is all meals, we have a training this week to give us some further details, once we get some details sorted out with the state, we'll send some communications out to families, but it is all meals.
That is excellent news, thank you.
To be clear, all first meals, so.
Yes, all first meals. Somebody needs second breakfast, they gotta bat, time to get it.
That's my, that's my sophomore right now, he's a two lunch guy, so yeah.
So is my third grader, so.
I think mine's a two breakfast girl, so.
That is great, thank you.
It's a pilot program, so is there a discussion on keeping it going?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you some, uh, brief information about it when I do the budget update, but it is set as a pilot program. Uh, the price tag is hefty and Massachusetts is going on its own, so the feds had an opportunity at about eleven billion a year to, with a B, uh, to do this nationwide, they chose not to at the congressional level. Uh, and so Massachusetts is part of their budget, because they were sitting on a pretty good budget surplus this year. Uh, passed a five point seven billion dollar budget that includes a little over a hundred million dollars to try this out. And C, uh, A, it's working really well for our communities, and B, it's financially sustainable going forward.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Very excited.
Right, compared to the last time we had to vote, the price change, we were all so devastated, that was, that was horrible.
And then we didn't even need to do it.
Right?
Well, we had to, I guess, for those second breakfasts and lunches.
Do it and then cross our fingers and pray it through.
Hope for the best, plan for the worst.
That's right, that's right.
Exactly.
I have the second one as well, uh, if that's okay, if I have direct attention to, uh, the next item here, which is, uh, Student Activity Accounts. And Jen, you'd mentioned something in subcommittee about, um, we had talked about this about a year and a half ago, and we did in fact. This is comprehensive, it covers not just, uh, thresholds, but also some language, so I just wanted to underscore, I double checked on that.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, so what you have in front of you is, uh, recommended updates to your Student Activity Accounts Policy. The large majority of this is similar to your handbooks, it's adjusting for some typos and some language changes. I will say, if you go to page two, midway through, the substantive change is the threshold, so the maximum balance allowed for deposit in both of your student activity accounts. Your elementary school, uh, Student Activity Account threshold was at six thousand, your middle high school is at thirty, and we would recommend those be moved to fifteen and forty thousand respectively. Uh, the rationale is twofold, uh, one with inflation, we just are using more money, that's the reality of it, and that's not just inflation, recent inflation, but since this was last passed to now. Uh, but also, the, um, the elementary school to some extent, but the middle high school to a large extent, just has a lot more activities. So there's a lot more, you know, mini funds under this larger umbrella that are doing really cool things for kiddos, and all of their individual fundraisers sort of roll up to that, uh, thirty thousand, hopefully now forty thousand dollar maximum. Again, that's the substantive change, but I'll answer any questions you might have about the recommended policy.
And what Ron alluded to is, I remembered when we voted to increase it to six and thirty, and I can't remember when, I was like, didn't we just up this? That's what he was alluding to, is when, cause I couldn't remember when, I just remember doing it. It felt more recent than it was.
Absolutely.
Um, but yeah, a lot of the, they're doing trips to Europe and, you know, other things, that it's just ex.
Those are expensive transactions, and what we better do is we sort of collect all of that, you know, upfront, and so the account itself holds on to that temporarily, which increases your total maximum.
Thankful that, um, those things are happening.
Yeah.
So with that, um, again, um, the policy subcommittee was bringing the recommendation that we waive the second reading. So this could be up, in place going into, um, this upcoming school year. So with that, if someone would like to make a motion?
I will propose a motion that we waive the second reading and approve the policy DGB, School Student Activity Account as presented.
Oh, second job.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Ron.
So the next gen, I'll, I'll start with, but I'm gonna turn it to Ron. You know, so, we're just excited that we had a family of a student in our post program, which is our intensive special needs program for students in grades, uh, nine through post grad. And, you know, unfortunately, the family had a death, a death in the family. Uh, and in lieu of flowers, the family decided, we wanna, we feel like this program has been so supportive of us and our family, that we want to have, uh, all the donations, uh, for the person who passed away to go to the post program. Uh, so they reached out to us and said, is this something that could happen, how is this gonna work? And so then, working with Ron, Ron came up with the structure of how this could happen. Uh, but there's a couple, uh, procedural play, things that the school committee needs to do, uh, this evening to have this, uh, go forward. And Ron's gonna talk about those things.
And just to underscore what Superintendent Neef said, uh, I think it's a testament to the staff that you have in that program and the incredible work they do with our kids and families, that, um, this family was, you know, willing to, to direct all this love and energy toward the Carver Public Schools. So, uh, to date, we received one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars worth of donations, various checks and so on, we're holding on to those in our safe right now. And to move forward, what we'd need is a couple of actions that the school committee can take tonight. The first is simply a vote to accept these donations, uh, certainly with great appreciation, if that's approved, uh, we would draft a thank you letter on behalf of the committee and the school department, uh, to each of those families. And then if you do accept the donations, um, we need a second, um, action vote by the school committee tonight to create accounts into which these and any future funds, um, related to this gift be deposited and used to support the post program. Uh, again, if the committee approves it tonight, my office will bill the accounts and deposit the funds accordingly, and then we'd set up the expense accounts for the school to be able to use, um, and work with the post program to determine what their priorities and needs might be.
Procedurally, should we vote to create dedicated accounts for post program donations first?
And then accept it?
Then, accept the funds?
I like it. Absolutely.
The accountant in me is like, I want the account to put it in first.
Neither of them exists right now anyway, so, but yes, I love that, that's good.
Okay. Well, then, I will very gladly, um, make a motion, um, that we have dedicated accounts be created for the purposes of depositing donations to the post program and using those funds for the express purpose of supporting that program.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye. And with that, I will make a motion that we move to accept donations, the amount of one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars to the Carver Middle High School Post Program.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys very much.
That is truly generous.
And thank you to that, I know who the family is, and it's just, they're a wonderful family and it's a wonderful program. And this is incredible.
So that's outstanding.
Understanding, for sure.
Alright, then we'll stay with Ron, who's, uh, who's gonna go right into budget.
Budget transfers, woo!
Why don't you do the memo first, then?
The memo, please.
Okay.
Did you see how efficient we're being, Colleen?
Bringing us across the finish line here with finances, yeah. Uh, so you've got your, um, your regular finance memo, I'll be very brief with a couple of state and federal updates. Um, one that I've been tracking, cause I'm interested in this sort of thing, so back in May, I, I mentioned to you that the Senate was passing, um, S thirty-five eighty, which is called the Ocean Reform Shipping Act. Anyway, thirty seconds on this, during the pandemic, there were many, um, global conglomerates, shipping conglomerates, uh, that were taking advantage of like supply chain jamups and either holding, uh, supplies either at port or outside of port, and then charging up fees, which was then passed on to everyone. Anyway, uh, that's unethical, and so this, uh, this reform disallows that in the US and with any US international company. So, tries to put some- So tries to put some brakes on some of the price gouging that we saw throughout the pandemics. We're excited about that. Hopefully we see some relief in some of the supplies that we're purchasing for the schools. The second item, which is the state update on Beacon Hill, as Chairperson Clority mentioned, the governor passed the state budget there, signed at $52.7 billion. Again, they were operating with a pretty substantial surplus as they developed the budget, which was fantastic, it's a good problem to have. You can see some of the items that I outlined for you that are related to education, including just shy of $500 million increase to chapter 70, increasing the per pupil aid from 30 to 60 dollars. About a $67.7 million increase for special education circuit breaker. That's that reimbursement that we would get for kiddos who acquire special education services. But those services are above a certain threshold, essentially. The other one that you were especially interested in was $110 million for the pilot program for free meals, K through 12. Again, both the governor and the Senate in particular underscore that this is a pilot program and they'll be collecting some data throughout the year, so I expect that myself and Teresa, our food service director, will probably be doing some reporting to DESI about numbers and participation and the impact it's having. And then they'll cross that bridge as they start to develop the FY 24 budget to determine whether or not that's going to be something sustainable in Massachusetts. The next portion of your financial items on page two is just your FY 22 budget update. This closes us out for the end of the fourth quarter. You can see your payroll and expenses as always down to the penny, broken out by each warrant. And if you would, before we go to the budget transfers, if you scroll down to the next page, you can also see the beginning of quarter one for FY 23. It's not really exciting right now, this is the early part of the finances. So no transfers necessary for 23, but it shows your payroll and expenses. And if voted tonight, we'll have quite a large binder for you all to be signing today. I just want to make a real quick reminder that in the spring, the committee voted, starting in 23, that you'd have a designated member sign our warrants. And so maybe at the end of the meeting today, we can chat briefly about process to have those signed for us at the, at the office.
All right.
Okay.
So just quickly show you the transfers for FY 22, closes us out in FY 22. Typically, we go to the transfers tab, but the end of the fiscal year, I might keep on the budget tab. And if you could just scroll to the very bottom of the budget tab. I think you're already on, yeah, that's one, you just roll to the bottom of that one. So you've got your full FY 22 budget in front of you, as you always do, along with your transfers tab there. The only thing I want to really bring your attention to is your roll up balance, $29,292.24. That's a very specific number intentionally identified for the end of fiscal 22. You may remember back in the spring, myself and Mr. Seidenthal have been working on a facilities assessment. He's brought a company in to take a look at all of our facilities, which is fantastic. Anyway, to do that, we entered that contract in FY 22. Work began in FY 22, but it's not a conclude until the end of the summer. So this is essentially just a rolled encumbrance, that money's already been encumbered in 22, will ultimately be paid in 23. We keep the balance in 22, if you vote that today as your final balance, it'll be transferred over to 23 and paid when the invoice comes in. So essentially, your rollback for the year is zero, barring that single invoice. I'll answer any questions you have about all things FY 22, anything FY 23, your final budget for closing out 22, or any transfers.
Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Comments?
Nope.
Thank you very much for all of your, your efforts, they are greatly appreciated, I love the transparency. It's clearly super important, so. With that, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the fiscal year 22 budget transfers as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
And that brings us to our last agenda item this evening, which is the approval of field trips. So we have two field trips on air, junior class to Salem, Mass. in October, and grade six, seven to Camp Bourndale in October. Not to put Mrs. Cabral on the spot, but we might put her on the spot a little bit. I don't know if you want to talk about the Camp Bourndale going to October at all, or I don't know if anybody had any thoughts about that or questions, or?
I was curious why it was six and seven. I know it used to be a sixth grade trip and then the sixth grade didn't get to go, but, and then, so I didn't know if it was moving to seventh, if that's an attempt to move it back. I'm just curious.
Yeah, so I know a little bit of the backstory, but I, as my middle school assistant role, I was not completely involved in the planning and discussion of it. But my understanding of it is it was, it started as a sixth grade trip.
Yep.
And then it transitioned to a seventh grade trip because the teachers felt it was more curriculum appropriate for the seventh grade science curriculum. And we, I don't know how many years we've done it as a seventh grade trip, but now that we've had both experiences, we find that it's better as a sixth grade trip. And they're just more age appropriate, more developmentally appropriate. And we had always preferred to get a fall slot because just the whole nature of the trip and the team building and the camaraderie that comes out of it. You go in June and then they go home in the summer and they come back in a different mix. So if you go in October and then you have the whole year to build off of that, it's a better fall trip.
That makes a lot of sense.
Perfect, perfect. And the goal, and the goal is to, since we put you on the spot, and the goal is to transition back to.
To sixth grade, okay. That perfectly explains.
We didn't want the seventh grade students this year to miss the opportunity. So this one year is, they both will have the experience and then moving forward, it will be turned to a sixth grade trip.
That is great.
One follow-up question, and it's okay if you don't have the answer, but do you, will the sixth and seventh graders be sort of intermingled or is the intent to sort of keep them separate?
Two different days, or two and a half different days. So the sixth grade would go for two and a half days and then come back, and then the seventh grade goes down for the next two and a half days.
Okay.
Okay, so it is abbreviated.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, that's what happens when, when you stay at our meetings, you might get called back up to answer a question.
No one prepares you for. Saying, I think Christine knows to answer this question better than I do. But I, but I had a sense the question was coming.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your answering.
So we could, you could both approve, we can make one motion to approve both field trips if you choose to do so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the field trips for the junior class to Salem and the grade six and seven to Camp Bourndale.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great time, everyone.
So nice to be voting on these things.
Right, I, like that, that's like, this is, this is joy, this is, this is so joyful. All right, and with that, that brings us to reports from the school committees. Look at that. What time is it? Ooh, look at that. We haven't had a meeting like this in a, in a very, very long time.
I'll start, if nobody else is jumping to the microphone, okay. So I guess, I, I will say I have been not anticipating the end of summer, like I don't want summer to end. But our last school will be starting for students two weeks from tomorrow and for teachers two weeks from yesterday. And administration is already on the ground running. I hope that everybody was able to get some rest and, and you know, just kind of refill the tanks, so to speak, over the summer. I am really looking forward to a school year that is just filled with positivity. I wore my new shirt tonight, which says, be kind to everyone because I just feel like that is, like the elementary had their be kind last year and it was so good and I just, I don't know, I want this to just be the mantra, and so I'm trying to exude this, that I just want everyone to be kind to everyone. So I just wish everyone luck as we go down the home stretch, try to glean as much as you can out of summer. But two weeks from tomorrow, those buses are gonna be rolling, so I just wish everybody good luck as we get there and here's to a great school year. And thank you everyone for all of your hard work.
Here, here. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll, um, I usually follow up, Jen. So I would also like to thank the middle high school administration for soaking up and transitioning seemingly very smoothly. We really appreciate it and I wish you really much success this year. I'd also like to shout out the elementary schools having a tiny classroom, we read on August 29th, grades one through five. Gonna get kindergarten orientation on June 6th, 22. I am still looking forward to soaking up all the summer, I'm living for North Conway tomorrow with my family. So definitely get all the time in camp and I wish everyone a wonderful, successful win year. It's gonna be a great one and I appreciate everything, all, everybody does, it's all, it's a community. One of us all putting in our effort, so we appreciate it, everybody.
Great, thank you. All right.
So I'm actually looking forward to the summer ending because I'm looking forward to Halloween. If anybody knows me, they know that I am Halloween crazy, but I'm very much looking forward to my daughter's first normal school year. So as we all know, when COVID hit, she was in kindergarten, now she's going into third grade, so I'm very, very excited to start this year off with a lot of normalcy and positivity. I'm very, very excited about this. And I do just want to get a quick shout out to the Carver Elementary PTO and thank them for their generous offer to buy the students' school supplies this year. I think that's a great relief for a lot of families, I can't tell you how many emails I got about the school supplies. When is the list coming out? So I'm very excited about that and I'm very thankful to them for that. And like Jen and Colleen said, I'm just very excited for this year to move forward in positivity. I wish you much success in the middle high school this year and this transition. I think we've made an excellent start and you've all worked very hard and I appreciate it thoroughly. Thank you.
Great.
I'm actually just, I'm really excited for school to start back up. That means my summer's over too, but I'm really looking forward to some really wonderful things coming this year as opposed to the past few years in education and I'm excited that it will be my first full year in this position and I really look forward to what we're gonna do this year.
Excellent, thank you. I echo everyone's sentiments in terms of looking forward to a positive year. I am ready for fall personally, however, I am gonna try to soak up as much summer as I possibly can. I recommend everyone do the same and everyone remember to do your summer reading. Right, there's some summer assignments, you got two weeks left, get those done, get those submitted. I know there was a lot about book reading over the summer, which is, I, I love to read, so it's always a good thing for me when someone says, here, read this book. It's always a good thing for me. I appreciate everyone's efforts, I know that the past three years have been extremely challenging. So I am also very excited to go into this year with a full calendar of events. And let's hope that just continues to build and to build. I'm looking forward to seeing how the win hour develops, that's very exciting. And I know that people are, right, gonna soon be going to the elementary school to see their classrooms and meet their teachers, very, very exciting things. Very thankful and grateful, so I appreciate everyone's efforts. I just want to say thank you to the committee for everyone, for your input. We had a retreat last week where we got together and did some training and made some goals for ourselves that we'll be bringing forward to vote on in the next few months. And I'm eager to get to work and ready to get to work and have a year filled with positiveness. And I'm looking forward to seeing the students there and telling us about their, their accomplishments and hearing their reports. So I appreciate everyone's efforts and I'm looking forward to seeing those buses on the streets. And everyone, please be respectful of the buses, as we always say. And please, everyone be kind. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Jen, you got it.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
8:45, look at that. Excellent.